6.4 presentation and consideration regarding community development block grant funding for the community development and economic development allocations of the California Department of Housing and the Community Development, Community Development Block Program, sometimes known as CDBG. And so with that, I will give this to our county administrator, Susan Parker.
Thank you, Chair. This morning, we have Jeff Lucas from Community Development Services, who's our CDBG consultant. This is an annual requirement if we plan to apply for any funds from HCD and CDBG.
Good morning.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi. Well, we're done with the place. Well, thank you for allowing me to come down here.
Before you yell that.
Sam's gonna want.
Yeah, Scott. Been a long time. They don't let me out much anymore.
Thanks, Bob.
So, okay, thank you. So, every year, the Community Development Block Grant Program lets out what they call a Notice of Funding Availability. And over the years, Lake County's been very successful in acquiring funds. Currently, we have accessed and have active grants for, as you know, the Cobb Mountain Water Improvement System. I think they've closed out the grant for the sewer system in Anderson Springs. Right now, we have active funding through CDBG, and we're conducting workshops for low-interest business loan programs where we have 1% loans in the range from $35,000 to $350,000. And there's a workshop today, by the way, at the Middletown Library from 12:00 to 1:30. We've got notices out. We had a nice workshop at Upper Lake yesterday, and we'll have one in Kelseyville. The idea is to get the word out about these loan programs so that our businesses can access these low-interest loan funds, and it'll help stabilize them. They're still working through the COVID impacts on their cash flow. Today, I wanted to talk to you, the board, about the Notice of Funding Availability. This year, the funds are being made available through the state in the amount of 1.5 million. We are a little bit limited because of the way the state's utilizing the funds this year. The activities that we can pursue, if we go to the next, thank you, Kim, are typically, we can access funds for housing rehab, housing acquisition, public improvements, public facilities, and public services. In the economic development arena, we can access funds for microenterprises, technical assistance, which we have active now, the Business Assistance Program, which I mentioned just a bit ago, and then what they call the over-the-counter application process, which is for larger infrastructure or business loans for businesses that will create or retain jobs. It's all about job retention or job creation in the economic development part of the program. There's also planning and technical assistance for either economic development or community development activities. All program project activities must meet one of the following national objectives. And this, the most important one, is principally to benefit low-income households or persons. And most of Lake County falls into that criteria relative, when you take a look at the census tracts, the number of low to moderate income folks, most of Lake County meets that criteria. So, many of the projects that we look at meet that. And, for example, the project on Cobb Mountain, the water system after the fire, because there was so much displacement, when we did a survey of income levels there, we found that over 51% of the folks were, met that criteria, and that what made the program eligible, as an example. We also can use the funds to mitigate slums and blight, do spot, sorry, spot, blight for economic development programs. The county has done that in the past when the redevelopment agency was active. We can also use the funds to meet an urgent need. The state really doesn't like that, so it's very difficult to get past the thresholds that they've set up. They're actually, we see them as barriers to using that part of the fund. So, on April 19th, the Notice of Funding Availability was let out in the amount of 1.5 million. There's no allocations this year for community development projects. For example, we can't build infrastructure for a community development facility such as a senior center in Middletown, for example. They're not allowing us to do that this year, or for multifamily housing or housing infrastructure projects. We can use the funds for microenterprise activities, which is primarily to help small businesses with, with marketing, understanding cash flow, hiring people, those kinds of things. We can also provide access funds to provide low-interest loans, additional funds. Our, our point of view right now is that we have about 1.5 million available for that right now already, so we're not thinking there's a need for that at this time. On the planning and technical assistance side of things, we can apply for $250,000 for, and that's for assessments and strategies. And what we'd like to talk about today is the board's consideration of pursuing funds in that amount to do a housing needs assessment and then a strategy, an actual write-up on how we would implement a housing strategy to generate more housing in the county if the needs assessment indicates that that's, that's important and something we should do. In our work, looking at the housing needs in the county, there are, there are certain reports out there, but we couldn't find anything that was specific to, that would guide the various funding sources and, and the county overall towards, you know, what areas should we be pursuing housing, what kind of housing, and how can we fund that, that kind of activity? So, that's one thing that we wanted to discuss with the board and get input, and I think Susan Parker may have comments on that.
My only comment at this point in time is that we had talked about what our options might be, and I thought this was one of the high priority need that the board has expressed, so I thought it would be a good grant to go after.
Supervisor Sebastian?
So, if I understand correctly, there's 1.5 available for us, and we're only asking for 250?
There's 1.5 overall, and they break it down into certain activities that you can apply for. So, for example, if you're going to do, if you decide, well, we're going to pursue a planning and technical assistance activity, then the limit on that is 250,000. If we're going to apply for economic development activity, the limit on that is 750,000. So, the overall, the overall is 1.5, but within that, there's categories and limitations.
And from what you stated, that we've already, we already have enough in the economic development right now, is that a revolving loan, if people pay those back, the ones that you're offering right now? So, we already have the revolving loan situation handled? I just wanted, I just wanted to check again to make sure we're not leaving money on the table that we could be utilizing, because there's definitely a step two after the strategy, and I definitely want to move forward with saying yes to doing a housing plan strategy, because we have to have one. We, we can't just decide to throw something on the map around the lake and say, this is where we start. We have to understand what the needs are. And I think the, the best information you can get is unfortunately old. The area plans do offer some really good information on the housing stock, but it's, it's outdated in so many areas that it's not a good, accurate place to get that information from. So, I'm all in favor of the 250. I just want to make sure that there's no other alternatives that we can make sure we bring in that 1.5 for other things that we can utilize.
You know, if the board determines that we should apply, the county should apply for funds for more low-interest loans for businesses, that we can do that, up to 750,000. And right now, we have 1.5 that's available. We're just starting our workshops and getting the word out and that kind of thing. I mean, we just had the first one yesterday. So, it's hard to tell exactly where the, what the market's gonna tell us, what, what we should do. But if the board said, you know what, we should apply for additional funds for more low-interest loans, that, you know, that's, that's what we would do. So, it's, from what we're seeing day to day, we think there's enough right now available, but it could be we should plan for the future. We, and given that it takes over a year from the point of application to the point that we can actually access the funds, it might be a good idea to apply for more low-interest loan funds for businesses.
And my, my last question would be, that's more capacity to fill out the grant to request for more. There's more reporting that comes along with that. And when do we have to give the money back if we don't use it? What, what's the timeline that comes along with those kinds of funds?
We have, it's about two and a half years to utilize the funds. The state's been behind on everything, the Housing Community Development Department that we work with on this stuff. And so, they've been pretty understanding as far as granting extensions for when, when you get me a little bit behind on spending. And a lot of the times, it's their fault. They don't get us the documents we need to legally pursue the programs and start spending money. And, and they understand that. And so, it's usually about two and a half, three years, but if you have a valid reason for asking for an extension, they'll give it to you.
I'd love to hear from the other colleagues.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, it has taken a long time to get those funds together, right from the state. Your eyes are getting big. Yeah. And I, I think, I, let's see what the need is for the loans. I know people are hesitant to take loans right now. They have been hesitant through the pandemic, so I think we just kind of wait and see how this goes and focus on this housing plan.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm an advocate of, if the funds are there and we think that we could be successful for doing it, that we should, we should look at it. There's no reason. What I, what I would like to say, too, with the, the workshops, you know, there's one today in Middletown. If we get a breakdown on how many folks actually got there, did this go to, let's say, all the business organizations, MAMA, you know, obviously, I'll just use my air. I know everybody has one. So, we got that to all of our advisory councils, to make sure it gets out there, because we have math, we have worth, we have all of those all over, you know, our chambers of commerce. Really, it's them to get that message out there. And I'd also like, you know, because we have 1.5, eventually, if we could just get a report, you know, on how many people participated in the workshops, people who were successful getting the loans, because it is one thing, we have that money sitting there. We want to make sure we can put it to work if we can, but we all know how challenging it is. Yeah, it says, great, hey, yeah, $500,000 or $350,000 available, but it's daunting to fill out these things. I like the over-the-counter applications. Boy, it'd be great if we're a low-income county, that all the applications could be over-the-counter, because I think that's supposed to be a shorter process for folks to do. I, I don't know if we can get that, but it wouldn't hurt to make that request on all of these loans here in Lake County, especially, you know, with the low-income qualifications that we have. But I'm in favor of looking at that. And then, one other question, I have a follow-up. We don't have a good turnout for these four, and maybe you already know the numbers. You said you had a workshop yesterday in Upper Lake. Do you know how many people participated or businesses?
Yeah, we had one participant.
See, that, yeah, that's.
But, but, but if I could just.
Go ahead.
Because the way these workshops usually work, first, I want to respond to your question. Yes, we did post the information, physically posted throughout the communities, as well as posted with, with sort of, you know, the Chamber of Commerce and the business associations. But those things, there are so many postings and so many information that it's hard to pull out. What usually happens is we, we run a series, and then we run another series. It's not, we just don't do one workshop in, in a community. We, these things are going to be ongoing. And it's usually word of mouth that generates the, the applicants coming and talking to us and going through the process. I, our experience over the last 30 years with, with these programs here and elsewhere is, it's, it's mostly the individuals that went through the program and it worked for them, who tell the business next door to them on Main Street or a friend, these guys, you know, they'll, they'll walk you through and you, and it works pretty well. So, while we did have a slow start, we kind of expected it. It'll probably be the second and third series where we start to see a better turnout than, than at Upper Lake.
So, you'll do, so you'll do another series of workshops? You'll be doing another series of workshops?
Yeah. They'll just be ongoing. Every quarter, we'll be doing them.
That's good news, because it says completed applications accepted by appointment on June 15th and June 29th. So, that was my question, too, since the workshops are happening now. If it would happen before that, 15th or the 29th, just getting the message out there. Glad we're having the presentation today, because a lot of people pay, you know, whether we have Facebook, however they're doing that. So, it's great that it's announced out there, and hopefully, we'll have some businesses that reach out to us directly, and we can point them in the direction to, you know, try and get the help they need. We know we have a lot of folks, but Supervisor Pyska definitely checks on it, or made a great point to talk about. A lot of folks are tired of the debt, you know, coming on, but those opportunities need to be there. So, we'll just continue on. The 1% interest rate definitely makes it attractive, if you're going to be a small business owner in these times.
And part of the marketing for these programs is today, being here to talk with you folks, because you'll get out into your communities, too. And on that 1%, I'm going to elaborate just a little bit, because this program is probably, while it's really cumbersome and bureaucratic for the operators, it's really good for the individual business. 1% fixed rate, interest rate, and we can extend the term out. As you all know, the term is just as important as the rate. Even if it's for some equipment, you know, we'll go beyond the depreciation schedule to 10 years. So, when you take a look at what that means to your cash flow, repaying over 10 years is a lot easier than five years. So, the other thing is, under certain conditions, the principal balance that remains after a period of time can be forgiven, depending on the job retention and job creation criteria of the loan. So, we, we, we know that taking on additional debt right now is hard for some businesses, but we've tried to make the program as flexible as we possibly can, so it's workable. As they're, they're still coming out of the COVID, and now we have additional issues with inflation. So, the cost of doing business, as you all know, is increasing.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for that extra information, because that isn't on there either. So, if we.
Well, that's what we covered in our workshop.
Yeah, somebody listening will get that. So, just, you know, that was just a follow-up question on the workshops. We're having them today. It's great that we're here. But beginning conversation was, in support, if there's dollars out there, I think we should bring them into Lake County. If there's a million dollars available, then we take that opportunity to, to bring that in to help our businesses. I know we're doing that. I know we had some successful ARP loan programs that went out to businesses and other folks. And as we all know, a lot of our, our local watering establishments, the bars, were really affected and, and, you know, those types of things. So, hopefully, we're focusing on those businesses that were closed a little longer during the pandemic. I know we just had a local one opened up in Middletown after almost two and a half, three years. So, make sure, you know, we reach out to, you know, those really long-term, we're all affected, but the long-term ones that were closed and even affected a little bit more. So, greatly appreciate everything, but in support of going after the 750,000 for the loans, too. That's my thought on it.
Supervisor Pyska?
Um, yeah, I guess I, my only concern is that, you know, we've been trying to get takers on our loan program for three years, four years now, and we still, three, yeah, we still have a fund balance where we can't. So, that's where I'm coming from on this, is that the Cockberry Council has had a loan program like this. It's been really, really difficult to get anybody to participate. It's been out there. We expanded it past Cobb. So, that's my only hesitation, is, is putting an extra workload on CDS. But, that said, interest rates are rising. We have inflation, so this could be a real safety net, I guess, because there aren't any other lending options. So, I, I see where you're coming from, and if it's not going to be too much of a burden, we could do it, but I, I just have a little bit of reservation from this past experience over the past couple of years.
And I appreciate that. Obviously, you know, we're all dealing with different organizations and stuff as it comes in, and understanding challenges. We've been through the process, you know. So, yeah, I hear you. Thank you for that information, because I didn't know the Cockberry Council troubles at this point, or the slow movement of the loan program. So, I know it's been advertised, and, you know, we're just, all right, thank you very much.
So, what extra, I mean, would it cause, what extra workload would, if we gave you this direction today to expand the revolving loan program, is that going to impact you in ways that you're not going to be able to handle, or is, you know, are we, is it going to be worth it? I guess that, we're just looking to you for that.
Um, you know, I really appreciate your asking that question. We are happy to apply for the additional funds. If, it's really the board's decision. We're happy to do it. We, if there's a need, we don't want to, you know, miss it. As far as our organization, we have the capacity. I mean, this is what we do. That's how we, we're compensated, and so it's what we do. We're happy to do it. We, we've, we have the capacity to do additional loans, and I'd like to do more in Lake County. We've been busy in other communities, in other counties and so on, and we've just now gotten this new fund available and up and operating, because the state kind of dragged their feet. If we want to apply for more, we're happy to do it. I'd like to find some larger businesses relative to maybe 10, 15, 20 jobs and really have an impact. That's, that's what this program is all about. And back to your point on getting the word out, we've just started, and I think we're going to have to do more. We're going to have to be more aggressive. And over the years, the success and momentum of the program is based on the word of mouth of those people who have used it, and it worked for them successfully. So, we just need to get that going again.
Supervisor Sebastian?
I, I want to go for the, the full amount. I think that it puts us, it gives us a pillow in case that things go really haywire. I know there's conversations, and who knows it'll happen when it happens, rather than just by conversation of a potential recession. And I think that our businesses still have not bounced back at all from before, and there may be the need. There may also be flexibility that's put into this by the state on the CDBG funds to help out our businesses, but if we didn't collect the funds, then we don't have the flexibility to use it in different ways to help our businesses. So, I would prefer that we're prepared to help, just in case, than, than letting it go. So, I would definitely approve going. And I would say, send us some flyers, some printed flyers, because I'd be happy to walk down every commercial street and just hand out those flyers and let, make sure that everybody's aware of that, because sometimes it takes that personal touch for people to listen and actually understand that that program's available.
Vice Chair Scott?
Well, thank you for coming today and educating us on this program. I'm definitely in favor of the housing needs assessment, the $250,000 for that. And I agree, personal stories of how this program has worked for people in our community is very valuable. I know this summer, we have extra assistance with our videographer, so maybe we can have people be videoed on how this program's worked for them, how it's been successful since we have the extra help this summer.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, and the only other request I would have to our new CAO would be, you know, a press release. If we could work together and get something out there, do some type of a press release, and I know the dates are now, but just that this program's here, a continuing process, those types of things. I think just doing something from, from the county side, appreciate, we're having the meeting today, we're getting it out. But just one more thing to, to push that information out to our consumers out there, our customers, our business partners here, helping Lake County be successful. So, you know, if we could do something like that, I think that would be, that would be great.
Supervisor Pyska?
So, I know a lot of people that have gone through this program have greatly benefited from the technical assistance side of it, too. And so, that will also be available?
Yes, we have technical assistance funds right now that have just come on, online with, with, with the loan program. And what we, I'm glad you brought that up, and I, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this stuff, because we do it all the time, and I really love it. So, the technical assistance part helps people with getting ready for the loan and then managing their funds a little bit, maybe what they weren't able to do previously. So, now they have funding, and now they have a support system that helps them along. So, we have that technical assistance now. We could apply for technical assistance funds again for small businesses. However, the 750 number is the total, so then we would have to decide, are we going to apply for maybe half a million in loans and another 250 for technical assistance, or how do you want to break that part down? And again, it's the board's decision, whatever you folks say.
I think having a part of that be dedicated to technical assistance, since Jeff's team has gone in to a business and helped them with their business plan, looked at all their finances, and really got them on track so they're ready for that loan, and they can really be successful. So, I think we should, we should do that.
Yeah, I would agree with that technical assistance. And, you know, we as a board kind of committed last week to the one team, one dream. That's that conversation, too, of not only giving funds out to businesses, but to educate them on how to move forward. I also have a request to you, Supervisor Sebastian, with PEG, you know, financial literacy? I would think that's financial education. Maybe there's some opportunities to put something together with Sam and get it on PEG and talk about these grant programs, loan programs, technical assistance. So, it's running on PEG all the time. I'm sorry to jump on that. Sam's like, oh, man. But, but I just think that, you know, we have this thing, you know, and I know we're talking about a press release, but that could be something that runs all the time, and that would be financial education for our businesses. So, I think if we could tie that together, that would be a, just a suggestion, idea. I don't, I don't know what it looks like or anything, but, you know, I think we have expertise, could, like you said, you like talking about this. We'll give you a 30-minute segment on PEG or something for an education-wise. So, just a suggestion, maybe we can move in that direction. It'd be great to have this running all the time.
And it could be as simple as a publicity for the program, as well as much more in-depth information.
So, what, would you recommend 500,000 for the loan program and 250 for technical assistance? Or what, what do you think is that sweet spot?
I think, I think that would be a good breakdown, because the, in some cases, we spend a lot of time with certain individuals, and the rewards are great. Sometimes you spend a lot of time and the return relative to job creation isn't, isn't so great. But I think there's a need out there, and you can provide workshops, as well as one-on-one, where you really get in and help folks, not only with, with understanding of cash flow and how to use QuickBooks. When we're doing training on financially fit, how to use workbooks, that's an ongoing deal that we do. So, you can do marketing, how to market your business, how to set up a website. Those are the kinds of things that businesses need, and then it's free to them. So, 250 and five would be fine.
And so, yeah, I like that. And I just wanted to add that when, when they get some of, I can get some of these out to not just the town councils, but I'll also go, I go to the business associations on the North Shore as well, Clogba, and I can get these out to them, not, you know, just at least so they know. And I seen it, actually, I think they posted it, you posted it on the county website, but I wasn't, now I'm really familiar with what we're talking about, so I, I can, you know, pump it out, so.
Well, well, you know, it's, coming here today, we kind of timed it this way on purpose so that we could come and talk with you folks, because you have high visibility, and then that'll get the word out on that level. And I do want to make sure I communicate to you that the, these are ongoing workshops and outreach. It's not just, we're going to do a few, and we're going to be doing them every quarter and rotating them. There'll be at least three or four every, every quarter, every few months.
Supervisor Sebastian, I thought you had yourself, too.
Yeah. So, right now, my math is telling me we're up to $1 million. With 250 on the planning and 750 total between the technical assistance and the loans, what are our opportunities for the other five? I just want to have that conversation before we just walk away with only getting two-thirds.
Please go back to.
PowerPoint?
Uh-huh, yes, please.
Because I'm, I'm looking at your PowerPoint, and it says 250 for microenterprise activities, technical assistance to small businesses with five employees or less, and 500,000 for direct assistance to business low-interest loans to retain jobs. But that's the only amounts that I see, other than the 250 for the planning and technical assistance as well. And so, that itself doesn't add up to one. And so that itself doesn't add up to 1.5. Is there something that's still available that could be of benefit?
So, so if we take the two, 250, 250 and the five, right, we have a half a million we could still apply for. The only other activity that we're eligible for this, this year because of the way the state's restricted us, it would be for a, a program that would benefit low-to-mod income households and, or veterans or seniors. And if there's a specific project in mind there, we would have a very short turnaround time to put, put that information together. But again, if there's a specific project in mind or our program, it can't be a project. We can't build anything, but we can use these funds to provide programs to low-mod households, veterans and seniors.
And is that for like housing revitalization to help fix up things? What, what, what would it be used for if you can't build?
Well, you couldn't do housing revitalization. So you would, it would have to be an actual program, a, a, let's see, services that are provided. You could supplement services that are being provided to seniors. And typically, what we've used these funds for in the past is building stuff. So because of the tight timeline that we have this year to make the application, the application is due June 20th.
It, it sounds like it's a little tight to be able to create something. I, I just wanted to at least ask about the 500,000 before just.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was going to say, and we still have to come back with a final resolu, final resolutions for you to prove before we can even submit to the state.
Okay, and I, I have one final question. I know that we contract with CDS for the CDBG, but I also know that we're part of Lake EDC. How does this complement one another? How does this overlap each other? I'm, I'm not in full understanding of this. So if there's, can be some information to make sure that we're, we're not duplicating and that we're benefiting from all of the above.
Yeah, we, we are also on contract to implement a loan program for the Economic Development Corporation. So we are, Andy Lucas especially, was talking to the executive director of the EDC at least once a day, three, four times a week. And so I think right now the EDC is pursuing a state program that provides up to 2,500 to small businesses in a grant to help them also. So if that's approved, for example, we will work with the EDC to market their program and then they cross-market our stuff. Because we're, while we may be situated, you know, situated in different buildings, we work together closely all the time. And we, we try to communicate with each other on a daily basis regarding this person, we're, we're helping this business with this and this. Can you pick up this responsibility here and take us with your SPD, your Small Business Development Center money? So that what we're trying to do is get as much flexibility and resources available to our businesses day in and day out. We do that all the time. So one thing that we don't like to do is, is overlap or, you know, get in the way of the other service provider. We work together pretty closely. We also, of course, work with the chambers and the business associations.
Appreciate that.
So with that, any other questions or comments? Open up the public input. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this item for 6.4? I see somebody in Zoom, phone 6205. If you can unmute, you will start your three minutes and please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Good morning. This is Bart Levinson and I'm having a terrible migraine. So if I garble my words, excuse me. I wandered into a presentation by Jeff Lucas right after the valley fire. And it was almost identical to what I'm hearing today. And I really appreciate the supervisors asking questions about how can the public be notified and be more involved? I'm a valley fire survivor and I've been told by the Lake County Planning Department that we, fire survivors, we rebuilders after fire, have had to understand that we are a low priority behind the incoming cannabis industry in Lake County. I am also a disabled elder. And what I would like to open up, ask a question about is, I've heard Jeff Lucas say in the past that some of this funding could possibly go for staffing. Could it help increase and bring up to par what's needed? Staffing and community development, planners permitting, code enforcement, and a, someone to help those trying to rebuild? And come from a point of view of, like you are with the marijuana industry, of realizing that as a whole group of all the people who've been affected by fire, we are a large group of money wanting, ready, able to spend in Lake County. We need support.
Thank you for that. I don't know if you, I don't know if that fits what we're talking about.
Different.
Yeah. But no, thank you for that in that there's not anything else. So let's see if there's anyone else on public input that would have any questions. And if not, I'll bring it back, closed public input. Actually, there is. Please come up and state your name for the record. Once you get up and state your name, we'll start for your three minutes.
Joan Moss, I was a valley fire survivor also. And I was in line for a FEMA loan. It was just great. And then what I found out is that if you take a FEMA loan, you'd have to pay it back. I would be trying to pay it back. I'd be dead before I could pay it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. This isn't about FEMA loans, it's small business loans. But thank you for that information, Joan. With that, we'll close in, uh, public input and bring it back to the board. And I think if there's any further direct, do we, are we going to take action on this? I know that we talked about that, so.
I believe we have a resolution coming up that this is just direction.
We do have a resolution, but I would like direction from the board regarding the preparation of these applications.
Are you talking about the amounts and what, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're exactly right. That was.
Are you talking about the amounts and what programs or? Okay, I have that for you. 250 for the housing assessment and strategy, 250 for technical assistance and 500,000 in loans.
Yep, absolutely, yes.
And, but we don't have a resolution in front of us today?
No, we, we have to get direction to bring it back. We don't have just consensus that those are the programs you want funded.
Direction.
And we'll come back with a resolution by the 14th.
We're all good with that for consensus.
And then the idea is, once we have the housing strategy, then we can go ahead and look at those other loans potentially as well.
Yes.
All right.
That's, that's what's exciting is to be prepared for that.
So we have a consensus. Do you know what to do from here? And we'll be seeing you in the near future. I'll be looking out for your flyers so I can post those and get the information out to you. I know in my area and I know the rest of the supervisors will do the same thing. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
With that, it looks like.
So good to see you.